Alderman Moran. Alderman Thibodeau.
Here.
Alderman Goveya.
Here.
Alderman Lopez.
Here.
Alderman Sullivan.
Here.
Alderman Clemmons. Alderman Senate.
Here.
Alderman Jettie.
Here.
Alderman Tebow.
Here.
Alderman Klee. Alderman Dab.
Present.
Alderman Kelly.
I'm here.
President Wills Shire.
Here.
You have 12 present and three absent.
Thank you very much. Also joining us this evening is Mayor Jim Donchis and Corporation Counsel Steve Bolton. Mayor, did you wish to address the board this evening?
Yes, thank you, Madam President. Just a few things. First, today I had the pleasure of doing a really fun thing at the Broad Street School, which was to read to Ms. Page's 4th grade class. This is something organized, I think annually, by a group of volunteers at Broad Street. There were a couple of other people you may know. There were probably 15 or 20 people overall, but Chris DeTulio, Sergeant of the National Police Department, was there, and Mike DeVarny, who is a firefighter, he was there. And I think everybody had a good time, so that was a nice thing to be able to do at 8:00 in the morning. I did want to address, Madam President, a couple of the federal things that are going on. Again, we have not received any clear instructions or answers regarding what federal dollars may or may not be cut, beyond what I've told you before. We still see that in the budget there, the federal budget, the House budget, there are 800 and some billion dollars worth of Medicaid cuts. That definitely could impact healthcare here and elsewhere. As I mentioned to you, I think I told you that with the state website suggests that there are 16,778 citizens, people in Nashua who receive Medicaid, around 20% of the population, and that sort of bears up statewide. There are states, I read, where the percentages are much higher. I think Louisiana, 40% of the people are on Medicaid. So those pushing for that, those cuts, may end up being impacted in their own districts. 40% is a high percentage, obviously. I also wanted to mention the tariffs. So we are, as you know, working towards a, the development of a design for a DPW, Department of Public Works garage. And we, a committee has met with the owner's project manager and the representative of the contractors, that's Harvey Construction, and they certainly know their business. They're estimating that between inflation and the tariffs, it could push the price up 20% or so above what you would otherwise anticipate. And of course, the tariffs keep coming in and out and out. You never know exactly what it's going to be. But there's, I mean, it could, it could be millions of dollars, $4 million, you know, I throw out as a guess, for the tariff costs of the garage, because there is the steel that constructs the build, that is used to construct the building, but also all of the equipment in the, in the, in that facility like that. There would be rippling tariffs that come ultimately to be paid by the city, extra millions of dollars. And that means, of course, as Alderman, you're all very well aware, if it's paid by the city, that means by the taxpayers who pay the bills. So in the end, this tariff could, is, in my view, just a tax by the federal government on the, on the property owners of Nashua. But we'll see how all that, how all that plays out. I did want to go elaborate a little bit about what Doria Brown mentioned the last time regarding the community power and this plan of the PUC to distribute costs. This is, fortunately, the good news is the legislature may save us from this. A bill passed the House and hopefully will pass the Senate, which would prevent this. But what the PUC is proposing, and I think Eversource is supporting, allows Eversource, when they make a mistake in estimating what their cost of electricity, the purchase electricity is going to be, and they set a rate that doesn't fully collect the cost of power. And that could easily happen if they, for a portion of their load, plan that they're going to buy electricity on the spot or the wholesale market, meaning the day-to-day market. That's a very volatile price. And if that price is higher than they anticipated or higher than their, the rate that they project 12 months in advance, then they lose money on the, on the power transactions. And the PUC rule would allow them to charge all distribution customers for any mistake like that that gets made. So let's just say, they say the rate's going to be, you know, such and such, and they plan to spend hypothetically $100 million, and it actually, that power actually costs them $105 million. Well, they can distribute those costs according to the PUC plan, distribute those costs across all of the distribution customers. That means us, even though, us as community power customers, even though they're not buying power for us. So it creates a financial incentive for them to underestimate what they would, what they're going to need to support a particular rate and, and sort of establish a lower-than-real rate, because they know if that happens, they can distribute the costs across a broader group of people who aren't even buying power from them. Now, this is, as you, if you follow what I'm saying, and I hope I've been clear, this is certainly an anti-community power rule, but would also be an anti-business rule, because most big businesses have their own contract for power purchase. They do not power, they do not purchase, like a BAE example. They have their own, they buy their own power. They don't buy it from community power. They don't buy it from Eversource. They, they have their own contract. And this would allow Eversource to charge BAE through distribution charges for any mistakes that Eversource makes in terms of underestimating the costs of the, the power that would be necessary to satisfy their customers during the course of a six-month period. Fortunately, and I hope I was clear, I, I wonder, but I hope I was clear. But the legislature seems to see the unfairness of this and may make this an illegal practice. So a bill passed the House, I'd forgotten the bill number, but a bill passed the House that would prohibit this approach. And optimistically, we might say that the Senate will do the same. But they're not looking out for, the PUC anyway, isn't looking out for our best interests, I got to say that, on this, on this score at least. And with that update, Madam President, that's all I have.
Responses to the remarks, Madam Mayor? Saying none. Recognition period.
Yours, hon.
Discussions or presentations? We have a warming station update, and I will recognize the Public Health and Community Services Director, Bobby Bagley.
Good evening, and thank you for having us here this evening. Bobby Bagley, Director of the Division of Public Health and Community Services and Chief Public Health Officer for the City of Nashua. And I'm here with Latonya Mucil, who's a Housing Services Officer. And between the two of us, we're going to give an update on the warming station. As of March 9th, it marked the second month that we have had the Elm Street Warming Station in operations. We have seen and continue to see the need for the opening of the warming station. During the month of January, we had a number of 72 individuals that received services there. We collected data for the first time for people come through, and so these are unduplicated numbers. And then during the month of February, we've had up to 92 individuals that have been served. But that may have also been some folks that were there from January. So we have had an increase in the number of individuals that come to use this warming station as a site for them for services. We've been able to connect individuals to other services when they come in. And that's because during vacations or when the per diem staff are out, I do have some of the community health workers provide backup support, as well as myself. We currently have 12 individuals that are onboard as our per diem workers at the warming station. These are individuals that have full-time jobs. Some of them make the warming station up to eight hours a night. Their, their regular work, but the majority of these individuals are working full-time. So we're very glad to have these individuals take on what we call gig work. They do this because they do care about the community and being able to give back to the community. And then we have about 25 volunteers that have come through the United Way, which have provided really good support for us as well. There are some evenings when the volunteers can't be there, and so the staff, the per diem staff that we have are usually the ones that are on site. We typically have no less than two individuals on site each night during the operations of the warming station from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And when the volunteers are there, we could have up to five. So sometimes there's two and sometimes even three volunteers that might be there. Sometimes we'll have at least a minimum of two staff, but then sometimes we might have three that are there, depending on the number of folks that are there. Usually, on average, we have about 25 folks. On the nights where it was higher, the highest we've ever had has been about 37. And that was on, in January, when we had the really bad storm, which also fell on the day of the holiday. And so some of the other places were closed. So we extended and kept the warming station open, not just 7:00 to 7:00, but we stayed open for the full day until the next day. So we have folks that covered during that shift, which included some of our community health workers from the division. We have had some staff turnover from the per diem staff, but that was due to people having medical conditions where they had to take time off. So we've had two that had medical conditions and they took a leave. We did have one individual that worked with us that decided that this work was too hard for them, so they had to do their own self-care. And so at this point, we do have the 12 per diem staff. Oh, and we did have one individual that started working with us but was not able to continue because they didn't have the documentations that were needed to continue their work. But we do have 12 individuals that are still there. I will say that we have had the opportunity, yesterday we took some time, and we wanted to do this anyway. We had what we call an intentional social interaction with the folks that we work with on a regular basis. So we hear what they have to say pretty much every night. But we took some time to sit with them and, you know, ask them what were some of the things that they particularly wanted to share about, you know, their experience with the warming station. And some of the common themes that we did hear were, in asking, "How was your experience so far?" It's noisy, because we have people that want to play their music. There's the movies that folks get to watch, so they get to watch movies. And then people have conversations, and some people talk really loud. They do find that it is warm, and that was the purpose of establishing the warming station, so they would not be outside. They said that they feel safe, and they feel that the staff cares for them and are very thoughtful. A couple of quotes. One of the guests shared, "I've convinced people to check it out and to come here so they don't freeze to death." Another person shared, "I would choose this place over anywhere else." Another person shared, "They're very thoughtful," referring to the warming station staff. Another person said, "It's warm. It's a place to sleep. There's food and snacks, and most of the workers are cool, and they really do care." We asked if there are, you know, there are limited shelter beds available in Nashua at the Sutcliffe Children's Shelter and the Southern Hampshire Rescue Mission. What is your reason for not utilizing these resources? We do have couples that come to the warming station, and if couples were to go to any one of these other sites, they're not able to stay together. And so one of the responses was, couples want to stay together. There's not enough space at these other places for them to be able to spread out. They're too strict. Many of them have been banned. At the warming station, because we are low barrier, meaning that we don't put a lot of restriction on folks other than the rules that we have established for the safety of the individuals that are there, as well as the staff, they say that there's too, it's too strict at some other places, and they've been banned. Here, they can come and go as they please, because people go out frequently for cigarette breaks. They go out to buy snacks and stuff for themselves. Some of these other places, after a certain time, the lights go out. They can't make noise. They can't go out, and they're locked in. One of the other things had to do with gender identity requirement. So there's specific requirements in some of these places. If you're identifying as transgender, that you, you're forced to identify as male or female, so you can go into a particular section of either one of these places. The quote that came out, "They're a last resort. It's better to sleep at a table than to, to set out a, than to set up a bedroll or on a bunk." And if the warming station were not available, where would you go? Outside. And so for the past two months, we've been able to provide a warm, safe place for people to be inside if they choose to. There are people that come. A warming station is meant just for that. You can come, you can go. You can come, you can stay if you choose to. And individuals do use the space in those different types of ways. One of the quotes that came out of this was, "I could go to a shelter, but I'd rather go with a team," referring to some of their other friends, if they were to go. And I'm going to have Latonya share other information and data from this time that we had to speak with folks and other data that she has. Latonya?
All right. This is good here. All right. Thank you. So another question that we had asked everyone at the warming station was, "What recommendations do you have for improving the overnight warming station?" So some of the other common themes we heard were storage for belongings. Storage is a huge issue among our unhoused population. Providing storage is one of the recommendations that the federal government has made for any communities that are dealing with encampments. More games, specifically Monopoly. So we do have different games and books and other things for folks to engage in activities there. So folks are appreciative of those things and have just asked for a different variety. More clocks, so just so that they're aware of the time, because not everybody has a phone. Cots, mats, or beds for sleeping, and more fresh fruits. One of the quotes we had from one of our guests was, "Residents need to respect the diligence it takes to operate this place." So one of the other themes that folks had shared was that there are a lot of mental health challenges among folks at the warming station, so that does contribute to the noise, and that contributes to police presence as well. So the guests really wanted to share yesterday that they're appreciative for the work that the staff does in helping de-escalate and manage some of these things and behaviors. Our last question was, "What do you believe are the city's responsibilities in addressing homelessness, if any?" And the following common themes were discussed. Safe parking options for people living in vehicles, so that would mean that they're not receiving citations for sheltering in their vehicles overnight. Creating more housing that is affordable in Nashua. Creating more places like the warming station. More community engagement activities. More outreach services. Create places for the unhoused people to do their laundry, and potentially opening a mobile laundry or mobile shower for the community. So those were some of our common themes that we received. And while we recognize that folks do need to sleep, it's just a basic human need, we do point out often to our guests that there have been some limited shelter beds available. So at the last two Greater Nashua Continuum of Care meetings that we've had, our shelter providers are present, and they have shared that there are limited shelter beds available. As Director Bagley just stated, there are several reasons for people not utilizing those shelter bed options. Something else I want to point out, so Director Bagley had shared that we had 72 guests at the warming station in January and 92 guests in February. Just to paint a picture, last year we had 45 guests in February. So this number is almost doubled. We are able to serve such a large group of people because it is set up as a warming station rather than a shelter. We did receive some guidance on temporary and emergency shelters from the state fire marshal. And there are requirements for the number of people that can utilize emergency shelter bed space per square footage. So we wouldn't be able to serve as many people if this were not a warming station, which means those people would likely be left outside. So that's a point that I really wanted to make here, because we are able to serve people who have been banned from other places. And the increasing need for the warming station, because we're seeing more and more people coming, we're able to meet the need of getting them out of the emergent cold weather somewhere safe where we're not having any fatalities due to folks being left outside, because we aren't turning people away at the warming station. Something else I wanted to note as well, I just did some quick estimates. So if this were to be transitioned from our original plan for a warming station to a shelter, there would be some additional cost that would, this would have to occur. And some of these things, we do not believe would be justifiable to use the opioid abatement funding. So that would be linens, cots, pillows, and laundering services. So there, all of these cots and linens have to be cleaned daily. And we're estimating that these additional costs would cost over $12,000. And there has not been a funding source for that identified at this time. So I wanted to share really the fact, the two main points that we wanted to make. Folks are happy with the warming station. We have talked to them. We've given the opportunity to them to share their, their opinions. We often do that in public health. So last April, we actually hosted an event here at City Hall where we invited individuals that are experiencing homelessness, homeless service providers, and community members to have another intentional social interaction and discuss issues around homelessness and housing. So we're constantly collecting feedback from this population, as well as others. The health of the public is our biggest concern. That's part of our mission in public health. So again, we do recognize the need for folks to sleep, but we also recognize the, the immediate need to support these 92 individuals that have been coming to our warming station to get out of the elements. And I truly believe that this would be very difficult to do if we change the operations of the warming station to operate as a shelter. Director Bagley and I have also spoken with our federal regional advisor from the U.S. Interagency Council on Homelessness. And we had a call last month, a multi-state call. So folks from Massachusetts, different places in New Hampshire, and Maine were on this call. And everyone that we spoke to on that call shared that their warming stations do not have places for people to lie down. Otherwise, it would be a shelter. So they do operate as a warming station cafeteria-style, similar to what we're doing here. So I think, I think I covered it. I'm not sure if there's anything else you wanted to share.
Thank you very much.
I don't know if there are, if, President, well, sorry, if the, after a presentation, if there's questions that we're supposed to address, or just the presentation.
I would, just the presentation, I think, is fine. And we really appreciate you coming out and talking to us tonight.
All right. Awesome. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Reading minutes of previous meetings.
There are none.
Communications requiring only procedural actions and written reports from liaisons.
Communications have been received from Lisa M. Fodo, Director of Public Works, regarding referrals from Board of Alderman, Resolution R. 25126, from Rich Lennon, Chair, Nashua Center for the Arts Board of Trustees, regarding presentation of 2024 Annual Report, and from Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services, regarding communication providing update on Elm Street Middle School disposition.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communications and place them on file.
There's also been a communication from Kenneth J. Lennox, Superintendent of Edgewood Cemetery, regarding a request for joint convention.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication, place it on file, and schedule a joint convention with the Edgewood Cemetery Board of Trustees for Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 7:30 PM in the Aldermanic Chamber. Without objection, I will suspend the rules to allow for an updated communication that was received after the agenda was prepared.
Communication is from Tim Cummings, Director of Administrative Services, regarding communication providing updated dates on the Elm Street Middle School disposition.
There being no objection, I'll accept the communication and place it on file. Period for public comment relative to items expected to be acted upon this evening. I have Mr. Keating, but we're not taking action on the warming station, so I'll have to defer you to the second public comment period. Thank you very much. Fred Teboom.
Okay, I'm Fred Teboom, 24 Cheyenne Drive, Nashua. Mayor Donchis likes to say that in the budget, there's very little he can do, because 80% go to, in the entire budget, go to wages and benefits. Well, there are two resolutions on the calendar, on the agenda right now. R. 127, Union Contract Bargaining Agreement, and R. 128, Contract Bargaining Agreement. Now, the mayor has laid down guidelines of no more than 3% increase for department, which I presume includes 80% in wages and benefits. If you look at the wages and benefits on R. 127, and it's attached to the union contract, Director Cummings said, hey, it's around 2%. In fact, if you look at the actual analysis of the wages and benefits of R. 125127, it's a clerical and technical labor contract. In fiscal '24, 3.5% increase, wages and benefits. In fiscal '26, 5.78%, and fiscal '26, tiny small print, 4.89%, fiscal '27, 8.19%, fiscal '28, 4.12%, fiscal '29, 4.2%. They're all over the 3% guideline. So why do you cry about 80% of the wages are consumed? There's nothing we can do about it. Here is an opportunity to hold the wages and benefits down to 3%. So there's only one thing to do. And the one thing to do is take R. 125 and send it back to the negotiating board. I'm not sure which board it is, or the fireman, and tell them to renegotiate. That's your job. Your job is to prove cost items. Turn it down.
Your time is up.
If you look at 128, you see the same thing. Same percentages. Turn it down. Then you can stop crying about wages and benefits out of your control. They are in your control, and this is where the rubber hits the road. Thank you.
Communications requiring final approval?
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donchis regarding purchase of two Honda Prologs. Alderman Goveya.
Madam President, I move to accept, place on file, and approve the purchase of two Honda Prolog electric vehicles with all-wheel drive through Peters Honda in the amount of $96,520. That's $48,260 each. Funding will be through Department 166 Parking Fund, SURF 81 Capital Outlay Improvements, and I'd like to speak to that motion.
Alderman Goveya.
So for the purchase of these two cars, if you look at them, it's $48,260 per car, and if you look at- two hundred and sixty per car, and if you look at the SURF schedule, we have them at, well, forty thousand eight hundred and seventy-five. We had a pretty lengthy discussion in the Finance Committee about going over, and that's why this purchase is in front of us, is it goes over the ten percent guideline of a SURF, so it needs approval by this board. The thing that was kind of the tipping point and something that got me on board, because originally I would not be in favor of spending more money at that time, was that there was a rebate on each of the cars for seventy-five hundred dollars, if I recall correctly, and it was going to be the intentions of this board, if, obviously approved, if we need a resolution, to make those rebates go back into the SURF account. So it was under that, kind of understanding that conversation in the Finance Committee, I said, okay, we're a little bit over at first, but we will be getting some money back in the future. Thank you.
Welcome. You've heard the motion. Further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding million-dollar contract award, 2025 CIPP lining of sewer interceptors.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion to accept, place on file, and award a construction contract for 2025 CIPP lining of sewer interceptors with Inset Two Form Technologies LLC in the amount of one million ninety-six thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars and seven cents. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund Bond 81 Capital Outlay Improvements.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding million-dollar contract award, 2025 CIPP main lining.
Alderman Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President. Move to accept, place on file, and award a construction contract for 2025 CIPP sewer main lining to National Water Main Cleaning Company in the amount of three million one hundred and thirty-eight thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and fifty cents. Funding will be through the Department 169 Wastewater Fund Bond 81 Capital Outlay Improvements.
You've heard that motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries.
Communication has been received from Mayor Jim Donches regarding multi-year contract award, Wastewater Engineering Services Agreement Number One, On-Call Engineering Services.
Alderman Timmons?
Thank you, Madam President, again. To accept, move to accept, place on file, and approve Amendment Number One to the On-Call Engineering Services Contract with Wright Pierce in the amount of a hundred thousand annually. Funding will be through Department 169 Wastewater Fund, Wastewater Fund 53 Professional and Technical Services.
You've heard the motion. Discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Petitions?
There are none.
Nominations, appointments, and elections?
Cultural Connections, excuse me, Cultural Connections Committee. Sandra Pratt, reappointment, 254 Lake Street, Nashville, New Hampshire, oh-three-oh-six-zero, with a term to expire March 1, 2028.
There being no objection, I'll accept the appointment by the mayor's red and refer it to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Reports of committees, there being no objection. Declare the report of the February 3rd and February 13th Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 5th, 2025 Joint Meeting of the Committee on Infrastructure and the Board of Police Commissioners be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the reports of the February 5th and February 19th, 2025 Finance Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I will declare the report of the February 10th, 2025 Special Budget Review Committee be accepted and placed on file. There being no objection, I'll declare the report of the February 20th, 2025 Human Affairs Committee be accepted and placed on file. Confirmation of mayor's appointments?
Board of Registars.
There being no objection, I will confirm the reappointment of Adriana Lopera Espidia, 15 Hanover Street, Nashville, with a term to expire December 31, 2027, to the Board of Registars. I don't see Adriana. She will be sworn in at a later date.
Conservation Commission.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the new appointment of Dale Carruth, 65 Elgin Street, Nashville, with a term to expire March 25, 2028, to the Conservation Commission, and I don't see Dale in the audience, so Dale will be sworn in at a later date.
Zoning Board of Adjustment.
There being no objection, I'll confirm the reappointment of Rob Shaw, 14 Sweet Williams Circle, Nashua, with a term to expire March 11, 2027, to the Zoning Board of Adjustment. Mr. Shaw is not here this evening. He will be sworn in at a later date. Unfinished business resolutions?
Second reading of Resolution R. 25126, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amended federal aid program project agreement with the state of New Hampshire for the purpose of installing rectangular rapid flashing beacons and to accept and appropriate an additional eighty-six thousand three hundred and forty-four dollars for the project.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 25126 by roll call pursuant to Charter Section 49.
You've heard the motion. Is there discussion on that motion? Seeing none, would the clerk please call the roll?
Alderman O'Brien?
Yes.
Alderman Timmons?
Yes.
Alderman Thibodeau?
No.
Alderman Kovea?
Yes.
Alderman Lopez?
Yes.
Alderman Sullivan?
Yes.
Alderman Senate?
Yes.
Alderman Jettie?
Yes.
Alderman Tebow?
Yes.
Alderman Dowd?
Yes.
Alderman Kelly?
Yes.
President Woshyer?
Yes.
We have eleven in favor, one opposed.
That motion carries, and Resolution 25126 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 25127, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Nashville, New Hampshire, and UAW Local 2322 Clerical and Technical Unit from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2029, and authorizing related transfers.
Alderman Thibodeau?
I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R-25-127.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Alderman Gavilla?
Thank you, Madam President. I do have a question on the contract. When we look at Appendix D, so it goes from a wage grid to a wage range. I just thought that was kind of different than before, how we, most of our contracts involve grids. Was that our idea, or was that Local 2322's idea? And is there a cost savings related with moving to the range instead of the grid?
Tony Bolden?
It was our idea, and there is a cost savings. In the past, the grid provided a step increase of two percent each year, and then there was an overall cost of living adjustment. The result was two percent plus three or four percent, you know, for a total of five or six percent or whatever. We did away with the step increases, hence no need for grid. We now going to hire people within the range, and at least during the life of this contract, the raises will just be as specified in the contract. So if I remember right, it's three-point-seven, three-point-seven-five percent, three and a half, three and a half, and two and two. But you've got that analysis already, but that was that change, and it was a savings.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25127 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Resolution R. 25128, approving the cost items of a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Nashville, New Hampshire, and UAW Local 2322 Professional Unit from July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2029, and authorizing related transfers.
Alderman Senate?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of R. 25128.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 25128 is declared duly adopted. Unfinished business ordinances?
Second reading of Ordinance O. 25048 regarding parking for tenants of 14 Court Street.
Alderman Sullivan?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O. 25048.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance 2548 is declared duly adopted.
Second reading of Ordinance O. 25049, authorizing stop signs on Level Street at its intersection with Chestnut Street.
Alderman Thibodeau?
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to make a motion for final passage of O. 25049.
Motion is for final passage. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Ordinance 2549 is declared duly adopted. Business unfinished at previous meetings, we're going to leave 121 on the table. Resolution 24109? Alderman Kelly?
Oh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Doesn't matter. I do have something on 109.
We have to remove it from the table first.
If I may, Madam President, 109 is authorizing the acquisition by eminent domain or other means of approximately two thousand and fifteen, in fifteen square feet over and in the Nashville River located next to Four Water Street to be used as a river rock. I would like to motion for indefinite postponement.
Remove it from the table.
Take it off the table.
We've got to take it from the table first.
Oh, yeah. May we take this off the table, Madam President?
Motion is to take from the table Resolution 24109. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, unless you want me to go through it again, as I clearly stated.
Motion for indefinite postponement?
Everybody good? Thank you.
Motion is for indefinite postponement of Resolution 24109. Discussion on that motion. Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries, and Resolution 24109 is indefinitely postponed. New business resolutions?
First reading of Resolution R. 25133, authorizing the mayor to enter into an amendment to the lease with Rambling House LLC.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons, Alderman O'Brien. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Finance Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 25134, authorizing the city to enter into a clean-water state revolving fund loan agreement with the state of New Hampshire and borrow an amount not to exceed eight-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand dollars for the Four Hills Landfill PFAS leach removal and destruction pilot test project.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Lopez, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee, the Board of Public Works, oh, and Alderman Kelly, and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, March 24, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber.
First reading of Resolution R. 25135, approving the cost items of a memorandum of agreement between the city of Nashville, Board of Public Works, and AFSMI, Council 93, Local 365 regarding required licenses.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Thibodeau, Alderman Dowd, and myself. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee.
First reading of Resolution R. 25136, relative to the supplemental appropriation of three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars of assigned fund balance into Fund Number 7064 Hydro Power Reserve Fund.
Additional sponsors? Alderman O'Brien, Alderman Dowd. Given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Budget Review Committee and schedule a special Board of Alderman public hearing on Monday, March 24, 2025, at 7:00 p.m. in the Aldermanic Chamber. New business ordinances?
First reading of Ordinance O. 25053, updating the taxi licensing ordinances.
Additional sponsors? Alderman Timmons? Okay, given its first reading, I'll assign that to the Personnel Administrative Affairs Committee. Period for general public comment, and we have two individuals signed up. Fred Teboom.
Good evening. My name is Fred Teboom, 24 Cheyenne Drive. As many of you know, I've been going to the board meetings with Mayor Donches, handing out a flyer, and I won't read it, but I'll read part of it. It says, "Mayor Donches misrepresents and ignores the plain language of the spending cap, the decisions of the New Hampshire courts, the grandfather law adopted by the Hampshire State, and the city ordinances." Three minutes I have, I don't have much time to go into many of these misrepresentations. Let me go into one. Let me cite from the court case 226, 2017 CB 00221. This is Daniel Moriarty, Fred Teboom versus City of Nashville. The mayor keeps saying over and over again, even last night in the chamber, he says it every board meeting it goes to, it's going to be the three so far, says the judge found the spending cap invalid. Let me correct this one misrepresentation there. I'm reading right directly from page 22 of that decision. To quote, "The court declines at this juncture to firmly strike down the spending cap." And he dismissed the case. He did not invalidate the spending cap, mayor. Went to the Supreme Court, they never got to the merit. The whole discussion got around, is the spending cap grandfather, they came down to a date which the legislature corrected. There's one misrepresentation out of many. Now, the other thing I want to briefly mention in the one minute remaining, I looked at the spectacle of last night's Board of, Special Board of Alderman meeting, no public comment. People were shocked, shocked that the tax cap proposed would leave less of a budget cap than the current spending cap. Shocked. How's that possible? For many reasons, that's possible. But what struck me, twenty seconds left, is that anyone in this chamber ever read the state law? Forty-nine C. 23 deals with the budget, forty-nine C. 33 deals with the cap, tax or spending cap. Did anyone in this chamber, perhaps a possible exception of Tony Bolden, I'm not even sure about him, read the Manchester tax and spending cap?
Mr. Teboom, your time is up.
Yes. Well, I'd like to hear an answer to that question. Thank you.
Mr. Keating?
Hi, my name is Bob Keating, 5 Coburn Woods, and I'm speaking on behalf of three groups as I've done in previous times, Unitarian Universalist Church, Grand Estate Organizing Project, and the Date Cafe of St. Patrick's Church. I start off, as I've before, I very much support the Public Health Department, it's done a wonderful job. Today, I was on the phone with one of the workers, helping two women in their 60s who had physical impairments, and she was meeting one at the bus stop to get them a walking thing. So all my remarks begin with that, but I don't want to take that away from the continued concern that the three groups I mentioned put in a petition about being able to sleep, lying down. And I want to put this in the context that 20 years ago, in 2004, we signed a plan to end homelessness in our community. Here we're having this discussion now, eating about people just being Here we're having this discussion now, eating about people just being able to lie down and sleep. That's what we're talking about, lying down and sleep. The mayor and, or meeting here, your meeting, at February 11th, said there was no legal reasons and there was no financial reasons why this was being done. So that's the context. Today, in the presentation from the Health Department, they spoke about the fire marshal. Well, the state requirements are 50 square feet, so 37 people were the maximum number in that place, so that figures out to be 1,850 feet. So you do the math, that's a cafeteria, there's plenty of room for that. And as far as I know, there still hasn't been a ruling on that by the, our city fire marshal on that. The comment that people are happy, I heard people today, they were happy they had that kind of meet and greet, they got fed, people are treating, well, that's not, that's not what I'm talking about. It's a simple act of sleeping. And I'm going to make a bold statement, I don't think anybody in this chambers is going to say, "I want to go sleep on the cafeteria floor tonight." I don't think anybody is going to say that it's something that they prefer sleeping. Maybe one or two people are going to say, "You can, you'll support sleeping on a chair," and you can sleep on a chair if you want. So all those knows, I don't know how we got in this position, but it just can be solved. There's seven more weeks, let people sleep, and the power is here to do it, it's just the right thing to do. So I, again, just hope it does. So thanks again for listening, and I appreciate it.
Thank you. Your remarks by members of the board, I'll start over here tonight, Alderman Kelly.
Thank you. I wanted to start by addressing the previous speaker, I appreciate the passion around homelessness, and I really thought it was interesting, because I hadn't thought about in a while this idea of ending homelessness and that we've, you know, had task force around that. It's not an easy problem, and I know many, many people here know that, but, you know, I've been working on this since I was in college, and it is, there's so many facets to it, figuring out if you have enough housing stock, making sure that people have the supports they need. So it is a, it is a very large problem that has a lot of inputs, and I have seen a lot of really good work happening in our city. But unfortunately, to your point, I don't see it happening tomorrow, and we have to just continue doing the work there. The only other point I had, it's a little bit economically uncertain right now, I know that people are feeling a little bit unsure, and I just wanted to put out a plea to support your local businesses. I know it's been an especially hard winter for many, these are your community members, neighbors, friends, who are just out there trying to get by, and I've seen a number of small businesses and restaurants who have said, "I'm really kind of, I don't know what I'm going to do anymore, I'm behind on rent," these types of things. So I know it's uncertain, it's not easy, sometimes it's a little bit further out of the way to go down to Soul Sisters or shop downtown, but it's really important that you invest in the, in the community that we have, because I'm so proud of the city that we have. So, thank you.
Alderman Dowd.
Yes, very quickly, I had the opportunity to meet with Cub Scout PAC 19 and answer their questions about local government, and I was really amazed and happy to answer their questions, it was amazing the questions they came up with, and they, they were very well-received in their group, so just wanted to thank them for the opportunity to speak to them.
Alderman Tebow.
Thank you, Madam President, I've got a couple of things. First thing, to the gentleman that spoke about the cap, I don't know if he was watching the same meeting, I thought it was a really good meeting last night. It was a chance for all of us to speak about this issue, which I think is very important right now. People who don't necessarily always agree on certain issues were hammering out this tax cap last night, trying to determine what would be the best thing. And I don't know if you watched the whole thing, but by the end of it, we were looking at the tax cap being a better situation than the spending cap. The first numbers didn't look that way, but then when we were kind of going through it, Alderman Clemmons was taking some things out and moving things around, I thought we got to a better place, and there's still some more work to do with it. As far as the public comment, we had a large public hearing before where we didn't get a lot of time to debate it at the end of the meeting because we had a large public comment. So we will have another public comment, a public hearing, because we have to, because we now amended it. So I think, you know, that process is going the right way, there'll be plenty of time for people to talk about this still. You know, we're going to hear the same thing, I know he authored the spending cap, that's fine, we'll put that on a plaque, you know, later on. But I thought it was a good meeting, and I thought there was really good interaction between all the people here, I think almost everybody that was here spoke, and spoke a lot, so it was great. So the warming station, so I was thinking about it when they were speaking earlier, and I felt a little bit like it was an ad for how great the warming station is. And I get that it's great in the fact that it gets people in a place where it keeps them warm and safe. That I agree with, 100%. But I don't know if I feel so proud that we doubled the amount of people that are in there this year, because that means there's more homeless people. And I don't really want more homeless people, I want people to be where they should be, right? Shelter, right? So, you know, I don't want 180 in a warming station next year, because I want less people in a warming station. Not because I don't want people to be warm, but because I want people to be warm in their own place and comfortable. So one thing I think, and to Alderman Kelly's point, we're not going to be able to change this whole thing tomorrow, but I hope that they're starting to think about what the plan is for next year, because I feel like we failed on that this year. We need something that will cover this next year. And again, I'm not saying, "Let's go spend a million dollars." I don't want to do that either. We need to actively figure out what the plan is, and if it's a better plan for reducing homelessness, I'll sign up for that, but we also need a place for people to stay and sleep when they have to come out of the cold. February was a really cold month, I thought. Hopefully, we're out of that time period, hopefully it'll start getting warmer. But I think we need a better plan next year, and happy early St. Patrick's Day to our Irish people here, because I don't know if I'll see you guys, so we're green. Thank you.
Irish? Want to say? Alderman Lopez.
Just to kind of add on to my, the previous speaker's comments, the plan to end homelessness and the organization that was taking the lead for it, the members of that board allowed them to close their shelter after that project had been underway for a number of years, and I think that contributed a lot to our current homeless situation, because it limited the options that people have who are going to shelters. If they have a problem at one shelter, whether it's with administrative staff particularly, or whether it's for eligibility, you don't have as many options. So I think we all need to focus on making sure that we have enough resources and specific programs that meet needs, to meet the needs of the Nashua community. It's also worth pointing out that specifically, that organization was working towards a low-barrier shelter, which is what Director Bagley has been advocating for, and that's something the city is still very much in need of. So I agree that we need to do more than just focus on keeping people warm during their coldest months, and I think that people who are serious about helping the homeless need to be focusing on those steps. We need to get emergency shelters in place, we need to get low-barrier shelters that allow people with complex needs, and those low-barrier shelters need medical professionals who can respond to the many situations. They need well-thought-out logistics, such as making sure that beds are available, are clean, they need laundry facilities, and those are things that a lot of the current programs don't offer. And the ones that do are very, very heavily overtasked. So I think more language could be used to give credit to the people actually doing a lot of work to save lives, rather than maybe criticizing people that, we are all acknowledging, are doing the best they can with what they have and the resources that they have, even if they're taking a different approach. I did want to thank everybody who was asking me about my Honduras trip, my voters probably noticed I was gone for a week, and it was a very successful trip. I've been doing this for 20 years, this is my 20-year anniversary for it, and time has flown by, but this was one of my favorite trips, particularly because it's the third year of our youth team, and it's really reassuring to know that of all the work that we've been doing in those communities, there's other people that are, you know, the next generation of it, and they may be picking it up. I also wanted to point out, as homelessness has been talked about, I, one of the previous speakers name-checked Soul Sisters, so I just wanted to point out that they have a Pay It Forward program, where basically you can buy a meal for a stranger, and that is used by members of the community. And then Delaina's House is partnering through Harbor Care with Joanne's Kitchen, not Joanne's, yeah, Joanne's Kitchen, right down the street over here, to buy dinner for a veteran. So I know Alderman O'Brien's a big fan of this upcoming Monday. If people go to Joanne's Kitchen, they can buy a meal for a veteran, and Joanne's will be bringing a boiled dinner down to the veteran staying at Delaina's House. So I just wanted, people who feel like there's nothing we can do, go buy dinner for a vet. I mean, it's something we can do. And then on a more personal note, my family is processing loss of my Uncle Larry, and I think everybody should have an Uncle Larry, he's the guy with the big beard, he's the big personality in the room, he was the cool uncle, always showed up to Thanksgiving in a T-shirt, and he was very much a part of my life, he was one of the reasons that I came to Nashua in the first place, because he and my Aunt Linda lived here, so way back in the 80s, when Nashua was very different, I used to come visit them, and that was some of my first positive experiences with Nashua. So in the, in the spirit of continuing legacies, I'm still here and carrying his legacy. So I just want to express my condolences to his wife Linda and the rest of my family as well.
Alderman Timmons.
Thank you, Madam President. I just have two comments, one with my colleague from At-Large, I agree with you, we should support all small businesses and leave the big box stores alone, just support them. So any chance you get, please visit one of our businesses downtown, across town, if it's a small business, and that would help out a lot. So I, one, will not shop at any big box stores. Secondly, I want to speak on the homelessness, and I was hoping that my citizen friend over there would take the training that I did this past weekend, however, I know that it's impossible for them to sleep on the floor, and the purpose for them not sleeping on the floor, so I invite Mr. Keating to take that training. And I'm willing to take it again with him, but I'll be at the homeless shelter this week myself, I will see him there, but it's a lot, there's a lot of reasons why they cannot sleep on the floor, they have to be checked every single hour, and it's just not that simple just to sleep on the floor. But I invite him to take the training, I think he will learn a lot from the training. It's only an hour training, however, we went two hours because we had a lot of questions, so, okay. That's all.
Committee Announcements. Alderman Lopez.
We have Human Affairs Committee next Monday, also an Alderman O'Brien favorite day.
Alderman Timmons.
Yes, we have the Board of Health Committee meeting tomorrow at 12:30, and this time it'll be in the auditorium.
Alderman O'Brien.
Thank you, Madam President. Tomorrow evening at 5:30 PM, there's going to be a joint meeting on infrastructure and the police commission.
Okay. Alderman O'Brien.
Yes, I would like to make the motion that the March 11th, 2025 meeting of the Board of Alderman be adjourned.
Motion is to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned at 8:34. Thank you, everyone.